Well, it's seven o'clock. Welcome to the January Regular Board of Education Meeting of the Lake Mills area District. The mission statement of the district is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. May we have a verification of the meeting notice, please?
Yes, it was posted on the LMASD website and at the Lake Mills post office and submitted to the Lake Mills leader.
Great, thank you very much. So I call the meeting to order, and I'd ask if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have a roll call of the members, please?
Brianna Besleck.
Here.
Dawn Delaney.
Here.
Ken Imers.
Here.
Amy Licher.
Here.
Robert Tempirio.
Here.
All members are present. We need approval of the agenda at this point, and I would ask that if there's anything on the consent agenda that a board member would wish to consider separately, this would be the time to identify that.
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Agenda's approved. We move into administrative reports. Mr. Consonine, you have a presentation for us. We're looking forward to it.
Yeah, I don't really have a presentation, but my student leaders have a presentation. I'm Steve Consonine. I'm the system principal and athletic director at the high school. A little bit of background, we have a group called SLAC, S-L-A-A-C, which stands for Student Leadership and Athletic Advisory Council. Every college in the country has a SAC, which is Student Athletic Advisory Council, but at Lake Mills, we wanted to incorporate leadership into it. So we have monthly meetings with students. They can show up. They have to do a few things to be involved, but we talk about things to make the athletic experience better, things that we can do as coaches, as administration, as student athletes, and we meet, and part of that is a leadership lesson. Recently, we've been talking in our group, sometimes how our freshmen really don't know when they come into the high school, kind of the standard of excellence that we kind of expect from our student athletes. So this year, we decided that we would give some leadership presentations to our eighth graders. Now, we are going to give you the condensed version. This presentation, this group, we're missing two today. One might come in late. The other one was unable to come. But this presentation usually lasted anywhere from 35 to 45 minutes. They gave this five times to the entire eighth grade because it wasn't just about athletes. It was about anybody that was representing Lake Mills. And one thing that these students take very seriously is we go outside the Lake Mills community and represent Lake Mills, and that's really important that we do that in a good way. And we talk about, you know, when we go on the road and a Culvers emails me and says how respectful the volleyball team was or something. We take great pride in that. So they wanted to make sure the eighth graders, before they came to the high school, kind of knew that standard. They're going to introduce themselves. They're going to come up and do their little portion of it, a brief thing. So I know they're a little nervous, so I want to preface this. They would be asking the eighth graders to raise their hand if they want some things like that, so they're not going to do that. They're going to more tell you the theme that they discussed. One of the things that we did, just to kind of give you a little teaser, is we left candy wrappers around the room prior to the presentation, and then we did a candy break. And so students were asked to come up, get their candy, and go back to the seat, knowing that almost all the eighth graders would walk right by the candy on the floor. So that was kind of a valuable lesson that they got to teach right there in the middle of their presentation. We did not bring the candy for the school board, but that's kind of what we did. So they're going to come up. They're going to kind of, we'll show you what you would have seen, or what the eighth grade class would have seen in their leadership presentation. They're going to introduce themselves and kind of the extracurriculars they're involved in. If you have questions at the end, they'd be more than happy to answer them, but I'm really thankful they're here today. So Hannah, I think you're up first, right? You guys can stand if you want.
Good evening. I'm Hannah Alexander, and I'm on the girls' track team, and I'm a captain of the tennis team. I began our presentation by expressing how leadership is something that we really expect from them at all times and not just in practices and in games. So we started off by giving them an example of somebody who's a leader and somebody who's not a leader, and we expressed the differences and what we expect from somebody as a leader. And we explained to them that when they get to the high school, they can choose to be a leader or not to be a leader, and how they're going to be a lot more successful in the high school if they choose to be a leader right away. And then we also expressed to them the importance of body language and how having positive body language has a lot of positive effects, and how a lot of times classmates look to their peers for body language, and if individually they have good body language, their classmates are going to have a lot better body language, and just how their classmates are going to interpret their body language and what it says about them. Thank you.
So Ava Belling usually does this portion of the presentation, so I'm going to fill in for her. Ava Belling was the conference player of the year for volleyball this year, and will be playing in college, too. We talked about one of our whys. If you've ever been into the high school gym, they put the years that teams have won conference regionals that are sectionals. And we talked about, there's very few things in a school where your class is represented for as long as the building is in place, and this is one of the reasons. We, when these kids, when they graduate, they can see their graduation class and the championship that they won. And then the next thing that Ava would talk about was just kind of the difference between winners and losers. And a lot of times, we think that that results in scoring more points or winning the competition, but we related it back to classroom management. We related it back to how we do things, who we hang out with, you know, everything like that. It's not just about the score.
Hi, I'm Katrina Breaker. I'm a senior, and I was on the girls' tennis team. And for my portion of the presentation, I would ask the eighth graders to raise their hand if they felt like they are ready to be leaders at the high school with where they're at, and then wait for that response. And after that, I would ask if they felt that they could be ready to be leaders in the high school after using all of the things that they were learning in the presentation. And then the next part that I did was play this video. If you want, you can play it. And it just shows some kids, a kid's football team, and how they don't have a lot of leadership and coordination, and where that leads them. And I said that that was how their class was doing, and if they were able to turn it around, they could have a really great high school experience altogether, rather than in separate parts chaotically.
I'm Michael Stembrun. I was first-team all-conference football, and I played track as well at the high school. I competed in powerlifting in the winter. And some of my things I talked to the eighth graders about was being common versus uncommon. So some of the things that make you common when you're our age is, you know, just being a follower, not doing the thing, not doing the thing it takes to, you know, get to the next level, just being common, just being like everyone else, not, you know, getting your sleep, not doing your schoolwork, being disrespectful in class, and then just being, here's some things that make us common. So our age, a lot of kids, you know, vape and drink and eat unhealthy. Those are just some behaviors that make us common, you know, drinking soda, you know, not getting your sleep, proper sleep, stuff like that. And some things that make us uncommon are, you know, actually showing up to the weight room and not just showing up, but actually putting in the work to get better, getting a healthy breakfast. I'd ask the kids if they got a breakfast or got eight hours of sleep at night, stuff like that. And then just really being a leader, making, just making the effort to be uncommon. And then I would show a video of Ed Reed, former Super Bowl champion, talking about the little things. And Mr. Consonine, when he first introduced SLAC to us, just really emphasized doing the little things, picking up trash, showing up and not just showing up, really putting in the work to get better. And that's something that me and Carson with the football team really emphasized this year and really got us to the next level, was just doing the little things, throwing away trash that was just on the ground, and it really helped us at the Lake Mills High School.
I'm Carson Lund, and I'm a senior at Lake Mills High School, and I play football and run track. I need to go back a slide. All right, so I talked about the differences between making small changes and big changes, and why making small changes could be more beneficial than trying to make big changes. I also gave them some examples of some small changes that they could make. And then here, I talked about failure and how everybody will fail in one way or another, but failure can only be considered a failure if you don't learn from it and use it to become better. Here, all these people failed many times before they became who they wanted to be, so they needed to learn that you will fail when you're on the path to become who you want, but that's okay.
Hi, my name is Abby Tepfer. I played volleyball, and I'm an all-state track athlete. I introduced the 10-80-10 rule to the eighth graders. This rule essentially says that whatever environment you're in, there's going to be these three groups of people. The bottom 10%, I related it to their grades, saying that maybe these, these are the kids that they see they're disrespectful to teachers, they're disrespectful to their peermates, that they see qualities that they wouldn't want to have as a friend, and these just are overall the people that they look down upon in their grade. The mid-10%, the mid-80%, this is the group that could be potentially their friend group, just kind of moseying on through the grade, you know, they won't go above and beyond to say things to teachers or to say something to their peers about like calling out their behavior and making the exception, but they're just, they're not obviously the bottom 10% and they're respectful and they do their due diligence. And the exceptional 10%, these are the people that they will see in their class and they see characteristics that they would want in a friend. These are the people that they look up to, that are always respectful to teachers, and the people that we, that our group came to them to say, we want you to be a part of this group, we want you to want to be a part of the exceptional 10%, and then when you get to the high school, to show that you guys can be the 10% and are exceptional and respectful.
My name's Caitlin Kitzimbal, and I'm volleyball captain, and then I also play soccer. And the part of the presentation that I stressed to the eighth graders were that you are the product of the five people that you spend the most time with. So we were really trying to teach them how to like choose the right friends because their grade is, like when they get into high school, everyone's kind of friends with everyone, and then as you get through high school, you find people who you want to be like or that you share values with, and that was something that we wanted them to be able to start to be able to do early so then they can find the people who they value and share values with, because like we don't want to be friends with people who don't respect the teachers and stuff like that. Like if you want to win championships in sports or you want to win the competition in class, then you have to be friends with who want to do the same thing.
And then we kind of brought it home with two final things. Kyle Popowski couldn't be here tonight, but we just talked about the difference between giving 99.9% and 100%, and how, you know, this really kind of struck home with the eighth graders, especially when we talked about 12 babies would be delivered to the wrong parents every day. They always got a little bit of a chuckle out of that. But I think even the presentation went over very well. I know a lot of the people in this room were here for it, but also kind of the last 10 minutes every time was the adults left the room, and our eight student leaders just kind of had a free, open session with questions and really set the tone with the eighth graders. They asked questions. It wasn't meant to scare the eighth graders, but it was all, it was more meant of a time to like say, hey, you know, a rising tide raises all boats, and we want you guys to be a part of our way. And I think it went a long way, and the presentations went really well. So that's it.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you, students. You certainly are exhibiting the characteristics of leadership as you are mentoring others, and we're very impressed, very impressed with you and the work that you've done. Mr. Consonine, thank you very much for shepherding. We appreciate you joining us this evening. The next report is from Melissa Brown.
Good evening. I'm just gonna, just wanted to give you a couple updates on kind of the bookends of our special education programming. Federal law requires us to provide services to students with disabilities all the way from ages three up to 21 if they still require it. So these are kind of the bookends. I'm going to start with our youngest learners. This year, we have a program called Peer Partners. And if you go to the next slide, I just want to talk a little bit about the history of how we've gotten here. The programming for our three and four-year-olds, so those who aren't 4K eligible, has definitely evolved over the years. Prior to even me working in this district, we have co-opted with Johnson Creek for our early childhood program. And as we've been working over the last few years to figure out some more inclusive programming, we knew that that wasn't the right fit for our students. Just an additional transition that was unnecessary. They were at a different school with different school staff. So we worked hard to work on playgroups, collaborated with our early childhood teachers, speech and language, occupational therapists. We've developed partnerships within the community at Teddy Bear Preschool and Head Start. And this year, we just started Peer Partners. So for our early childhood programming, we try to serve our students in their natural environments, which might be like daycare, but many of our students were home-based, and we knew we needed something more intensive. So last year, our early childhood team worked on a plan that included recruitment of peers, classroom space, which is very hot commodity at the elementary school, and materials so we could open the program this fall. So our goal is to provide services to our youngest learners based on their individual needs and goals in an inclusive setting. So our program provides hands-on activities based on weekly themes that focus on readiness, communication, motor, and social emotional skills. So currently, we have an early childhood teacher. Our vision teacher is also included into this program. We have two paraprofessionals. And then these are people who are not there all the time, but our occupational therapist, our speech and language pathologist, and our physical therapist also come in and visit the program. We are current numbers, we have five students with disabilities and six peers. The program runs Tuesday through Fridays, 8:15 to 11:00, and it's a consistent daily schedule. And if you go to the next one, I can talk a little bit more of what that, that day looks like. So they start with an opening, and then they come to table work and they practice their names or a different skill that week. They have carpet time, they have morning meeting during that time, calendar skills, classroom jobs. Then there's a read aloud, and then they have a readiness activity. Then there's hand washing and a snack, and more hand washing. Then we have circle time, a craft or activity that's based on the theme, free choice centers. And during that time, that's really where the staff are working on those social emotional play skills. Then they pack up, and they have recess, and then dismissal, and the activities are differentiated and adjusted to each student's needs and abilities. So that's on one end. On the opposite end is our transitions program, and that is our 18-to-21-year-old programming. So a little bit of history of that. That program started in 2017. It was originally housed at Arlac. It was moved to the high school at the start of last school year. So it's primarily for students with mild to moderate disabilities who've completed all of their academic requirements for high school. So basically, they've gone through the four years of high school, but they continue to need supports and to develop those, that functional independence. So our goal for the transition program is to provide individuals with disabilities instruction for their IP goals that focus on vocational, functional, and recreational skills. The staff that we have and that program, we have our special education teacher, we have a paraprofessional, and then again, as like in the Peer Partners, a speech and language pathologist comes in and works with groups of students that need it. We've worked really hard to develop community partnerships in this program as well. St. Vinnie's, the food pantry, and then we have a lot of school-based program supports. So our students work like hand-in-hand with the mill, with athletics program, with family and consumer science. They might help with dishes and things like that. We do laundry for a lot of the sports programs, so just anything. We have a student that comes and cleans the district office for us weekly, so lots of in-house programs as well. And the schedule for that, students attend various days and hours, but somewhere between Monday and Fridays from 8:00 to 1:00. So depending on the day or the time, you could see a different amount of students there. So we have currently seven students in that program. So I kind of listed out some typical schedules. Some things are daily that they do, other things weekly. One thing I'd like to highlight is monthly, they go to a place called Zacharias Acres that is an economowalk. It is an outdoor activity and educational location that was built specifically for people with disabilities. So they go and they learn different things on the farm, and they also get to build friendships with other transition-age students that attend there, too. And I did highlight kind of our new business program that they're trying to start up, and it's called Bow Wow Bones. So they just had like their first marketing of it right before Christmas, and that one, that was pretty successful, so they're hoping to expand that a little bit more. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Great, well, thank you very much. Next, Ms. Thompson, Director of Learning and Instruction.
Good evening. I just have two quick items for you that are in your board packet. We have two new course proposals for next year. So the course booklets will be going out soon to our students at the high school, and two new additions will be AP Chemistry and AP Spanish. So our teachers have come forward to say that these are courses that we would like to implement, and if we have enough student enrollment, we'd be able to run those courses next year pending approval from the board tonight. The other update that I have in the board packet are the summer school dates. We are starting to rev up for summer school, which is nice to think about on a day like today. The dates that we're proposing are June 15th through June 30th for Session 1, and then Session 2, July 6th through July 21st. Any questions? Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Ms. Naylor.
Good evening. How are you guys? I am just going to give a quick update on our SR2 budget and where we're at with that. So the budget has been entered and approved in WISE Grant, so that's our portal that we use with the DPI. DPI does have an allowed cost document, and it's kind of nice because it breaks it down into categories for you. I've provided a document in your board packet that shows where the budget items are in those categories, and this is also provided on our, our district website under District Finance for the community members to see and look at. But I'll just run through really quick, just the, the big buckets of where those dollars are going. So $208,000 is going into preparedness in response to COVID-19, $8,000 into mental health services and supports, $185,000 into educational technology, about $233,000 in addressing long-term school closure, and then just over $4,000 in addressing after-school and summer learning. So I did put a little asterisk in there that this is subject to change depending on revisions, of which we already have. I provided this, and then on the sixth, we were given an updated number of just over 2,000 more than what we had. So there'll be a small adjustment to that, but as we balance the budget and things come in, there'll be some slight changes possibly, but that gives you a good idea of under those categories where the budget's going. And that is all I have. Any questions?
Do you know, like, this is the wonderful SR2. Anything about SR3?
So SR3, Tanya's going to provide a little bit more on that. We'll get to it. And the budget for that, just a side piece, I don't know if you're covering this or not, but the budget for that to be submitted to DPI is March 11th of this year. So that budget will be put through, and then as soon as things get approved, I'll report on that as well.
Okay.
And they are recommending to spend down two before going into three. It's not, you can dip into three before you've spent down two, but it's kind of a recommendation of how everything works, and I frankly think it would be easier to do it that way, too, if so.
So I'll dive right in with SR3. So there's, unlike SR1 and SR2, there are more restrictions for us as far as, I guess, kind of unlocking the, the application and the budget for that. So while there's no actual application, you, the district does have to submit the safe return to Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan before we can even enter into anything in the WISE Grants portal. So I have that for your review tonight. It looks very much like our pandemic plan, but with the only change with some of the requirements were just to look at how we were going to provide continuity of services throughout COVID. So some of that looks like just continuing a robust mental health program, a robust summer school program, or as Amanda stated, we're starting to look at that as far as providing additional supports for instruction, and also, I hate to use that term, loss of learning, but just to be able to make some gains for several students who need that. We're also looking at our continuity of services as far as providing supports even this year and going into next year with some of the class reduction sizes, keeping the elementary class sizes smaller. As you know, we've added a class in kindergarten and/or a teacher in kindergarten and second grade, so providing supports for that. So it doesn't, the, so the report doesn't go into any great detail, and that, it's not required for us to do, but we do need to have that plan submitted to DPI. Once that, once that is in, then we also need to start looking at the budget, and the budget does require community input, so we, especially with our more marginalized groups. So we are working on strategies to connect in with our Latino population, so starting to work with Jessica Noche on a plan to get feedback from a cross-section of our community there. We're also looking at putting a survey out on the district website to gain information about spending the money. And then we also have to put a plan in because 20% of that SR3 money has to be set aside for evidence-based instruction, and so we're starting to work with a plan with Amanda Thompson and our reading interventionists and really trying to make sure that we are beefing up intervention, and then also our staff development and just overall math and literacy strategies. So we will put together, as Tasha stated, a looser budget, but then getting input from all different people in the community along with our staff as far as different directions of where they'd like to see us go, even though we do have limitations even with that input because of how the monies can be spent. But we will, we will fearishly be working on that. Going on, then going back up to the election update, I have actually communicated, I think, with some of you, we, we were planning on a primary and thought we had five candidates we'll know for sure tomorrow morning. We were waiting for some paperwork to come in the mail. By state statute, it had to be postmarked by February 5th. We are waiting for that, and after consulting with our legal counsel, they said just wait until Tuesday. If you haven't gotten it by Tuesday, we need to proceed because Megan has work that she needs to do as far as getting names on the ballot and going forward with that, and if that candidate's paperwork doesn't appear, they will have to appear as a write-in candidate. So if we, for some reason, get that, hopefully that paperwork tomorrow, then it will force us into a primary, and then we will, on January 11th, draw lots for ballot order. If not, then we will only have four candidates, and then a primary will not be needed. So we will update you tomorrow night along with that other candidate, which we've actually been communicating with all along. And then I've got the timeline there for you. We are planning right now, as you, as the two new board members know, I will be doing a board member training before the reorganization meeting, but we do have the reorganization meeting set for April 25th at 6:00. And then Bob Butler will be coming in and doing a workshop on board governance on May 2nd. I just thought with fairly new board members, it would be good to just have a workshop on just board governance and allowing you also to ask him questions about specific topics. So we do have that scheduled. And lastly, rec department update is in there. Rec department has been very busy, and I got to say, they're not satisfied with just status quo. They are always looking for innovative classes, especially with Club 55. I'm amazed with what Jane comes up with, to really just keep things like interesting and active, and so they've really been busy and doing a nice job even through these winter months. Okay, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Questions for Dr. Olson. Okay, we can move into the board reports. In special age, you will be representing the district at the WASB convention, and there are some resolutions that are, will be before the General Assembly.
So tell me more. Do you want?
Do you want me, do we kind of talk through each resolution, or is there things specifically that you'd like to share, I'm sorry, share on your behalf to take there in voting? Guide me on how this usually happens.
This is the smallest number of resolutions I have ever seen in my career. Usually, it's a long booklet, and then it's really hard to narrow down. It'll be like 50 resolutions. So I think they've really tailored the resolutions this year, to be more specific. So it probably won't look like a normal delegate assembly for you. You'll get off easy, Brianna, this year. I think it'll go a little quicker than normal.
And I think, I mean, when it comes down to it, at least personally, I feel like we can tell you, just vote your conscience, and we'll, we'll support it, so.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay.
We'll leave it in your capable hands.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Okay, Dr. Delaney, do we have some correspondence?
Good evening. Yes, we received one thank-you note from the family of John, Bill, and Beth Cordy, and that was the correspondence for the past month. Thank you.
I just want to interject something there. I did attend the funeral, or I went through the beginning part. If you want to really see the strength of our staff, that was a place to see that. There were so many teachers in attendance, all of the bus drivers attended and came together. I was a very snowy, very bad weathered day that morning, and there were teachers out there with the salt salting the sidewalks out in the front of the church and just all chipping in. I mean, I just stood back and watched our staff and how supportive they are. It was, it was really touching.
Ms. Williams, our school student.
Hi, I'm Sidney Williams. I'm the senior class president, and I'm here to give you some updates on the high school. And to start, I'll start off with our winter sports. So wrestling, they're having a great season so far. This past weekend, they had a meet in North Vondelak. Also, at Badger State a couple of weekends ago, Jordan Tindell placed second, beating out 195 other wrestlers for his weight class. For boys basketball, they are sitting at a 5- and 6 record, and with that, they have played heavy competition. Last Friday, they played their first conference game of the year, playing Lakeside, and unfortunately lost in overtime. For girls' basketball, they currently have an 8- and 3 record. This last week, they played two conference games, one against Pointe and won that one, as well as they had a game on Saturday against Lakeside and won that one as well. In conference, that puts them at a 2-0 record. And for other things going on at the high school, our forensics team is starting up for the year. They are having tryouts this week, and for the different spots within it, and they have their first meet February 7th. And next, on January 22nd, our high school student council will be hosting a dance for our high school students, and this will be a fundraiser for the mill, this high school's food pantry. And this was something student council did because of how with COVID, a lot of, we didn't have like homecoming or prom for a couple of different things, so we thought it would be a good opportunity to give some kids a couple of those dances back that they didn't necessarily get. And lastly, our interact club will be doing a fundraiser, and it, or it's actually currently going on, and it's for Lake Mills Fire and EMS. And if the students raise $250 on January 24th during advisory, they will get to watch teachers play musical chairs, but when they don't get a chair and they get kicked out, they have an unusual punishment to just add a little fun to it. For example, like, one teacher, Mr. Carmody, has agreed to dye his beard if he gets kicked out. So, and it's just a way to fundraise for our local community. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. The next item is community input. Do we have any members of the community signed up to speak? Then we can move to the consent agenda. This evening, it includes the approval of our December 10th regular Board of Education meeting minutes, the treasurer's report, vouchers and invoices, the personnel report. So I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving into the action items, we have the approval of open enrollment seats. This is in accordance with the Wisconsin statutes. At the January board meeting, we must indicate the number of spaces that are available for open enrollment. So those reports have been included, so I'd ask for a motion.
I move the board approve the open enrollment spaces presented for the 2020, 2022, 2023 school year.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments on the motion?
Can I just ask, do these numbers reflect the numbers we had talked about earlier in the year with amount of kids per, per class?
It does, with the exception of first, I'm going to look, with the exception of, I'm going to say kindergarten or first grade. I'll have to go back and look at my notes. So if we would have stuck with, it was kindergarten with the 18 students, it would have provided no space for any open enrollment, so we looked at 20 and just, because of the, you know, move-ins and move-outs, we didn't want to lock down those seats right away, so we kind of edged up to 20, which provided us a little room. But otherwise, yes, across the board, that does reflect that. You'll see that, because we have that extra section of kindergarten and second grade, we did move those grade levels forward, so we're assuming six sections next year. And then if you look at 4K, we're already out of space, our four sections even this year were pretty busy, so there will be a need to add a halftime teacher next year in 4K, and that's just to absorb our own students.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, may we have a roll call?
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is the approval of the summer school dates. Ms. Thompson noted those in her report, so I would ask for a motion for the approval of those dates.
I move the board approve the 2022 summer school dates for Session One from June 15th through June 30th, and Session Two with swim lessons from July 6th through July 21st. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on those dates? I see swimming is away from nature season again, which is great. Roll call vote, please, on the motion.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next is the 2022-23 school calendar. That calendar has also been included in our materials, so I'd ask for a motion for its approval.
I'll move the board approve the 2022-23 school calendar as presented.
Moved and seconded. Comments or questions on the motion?
Does this include the moving of the graduation again back to Friday?
It don't typically include the graduation date on the school calendar. That, that way, it provides some flexibility for the high school principals to set that date. So I think they're waiting this year to see how that works out before setting the graduation date for the following year. Otherwise, this calendar is almost identical to this year's calendar, not really any changes.
Got it.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye. Motion carries. Next is an action item relating to the resolutions, and as we mentioned a little earlier, we entertain a motion to give Ms. Beshelich the latitude to vote on those resolutions. Wow, that was quick. Any, any questions, comments? Hearing none, a roll call vote on the motion, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye. Next item is part of our policies. This would be the second reading of those policies from our December meeting, so I would entertain a motion for their approval.
I move the board approve Volume 30.2, Policies and Nondiscrimination and Anti-Harassment District Policies as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the approval of a maintenance floor scrubber. This apparently is replacing a unit that is 15 years old and is broken down. Repair costs seem to be excessive, so I would entertain a motion for the approval of its replacement.
I move the board approve the purchase of the Windsor Chariot III Stand-On Floor Scrubber from Nasco in the amount of $14,407.50. Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, comments? Hearing none, may we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye. Motion carries. Next is a follow-up to Ms. Thompson's report on addition of two high school courses for the 2022-23 school year. Entertain a motion for their approval.
I move the board approve the Advanced Placement Spanish Language and Culture Course, and Advanced Placement Chemistry Course for the 2022-2023 school year at the high school.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is approval of adjustments for some staff in the Recreation Department. May I please have a motion?
I move the board approve the Recreation Department wages as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded.
Were these, this was the, the wages discussed last month?
Yes.
Correct, yep.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we, we have a roll call vote on the motion, please.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye. Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye. Motion carries. Next is a approval to change the March, March 2022 board meeting due to a conflict, and entertain a motion for that change.
I move the board change the March school board meeting from Monday, March 14th to Monday, March 21st at 7:00 PM in the Lake Mills City Chambers. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on the motion?
Is this also, I mean, I know we discussed before changing the times. Does this, I mean, obviously, this doesn't include the, the time, time change, but are, do we have to vote on that?
I mean, in this motion, you could amend it if you wanted to do it at an earlier time. What my reasoning was, since we've only, this will be the last regular board meeting before we go into, well, I love April yet, but we, I thought perhaps if you wanted to change the time, we would just wait till the April reorganization meeting, and then change, you know, move the board meetings up a little earlier, and just, that way, it just doesn't confuse people for this board calendar.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, may we have a roll call vote on the motion, please?
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye. Motion carries. The next agenda item is the approval of gifts, and again, we are, we benefit from a very generous community, so I'd entertain a motion for acceptance of the gifts.
I move the board accept the following gifts, and thank the generous donors for the continued support of the students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District. $500 donation from Kerry Hoffman to the Lake Mills School, High School FFA. $2,000 donation from the Jefferson County Agriculture Fund to the Lake Mills High School FFA. Audio and video equipment from Timothy, Timothy Ballzer's estimated at $7,015 to the Lake Mills High School Music Department. Approximately 2,812-ounce bottles of LCAT hand sanitizer donated from Jensen's Plumbing, and Tom Hawke's donation of office space for COVID-19 testing valued at $500 per month.
Second.
Moved and seconded. May we have a roll call vote on the motion, please?
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye. Motion carries. Next is identifying any upcoming board agenda items.
So as a reminder, we have a special board meeting in two weeks, on Monday, January 24th. That meeting will be earlier, so that one will be at 6:00 PM, and we'll be going through the face covering metric, and then the newer COVID mitigation practices that the CDC has put out, and then going back to the regular board meeting on Monday, actually. Okay, the change, sorry, not the 14th, since we just changed that. But my goal, too, is to keep some student groups in front of you. We'll get some elementary and middle school students also. I think it's a nice way to just hear about the different leadership things going on with our students in the school, and give a little more of an in-depth look at, at all the great things that are happening. Otherwise, February should not be too busy of a board meeting month.
Will the January 24th meeting be here or at the high school?
Here.
Okay.
Should say it's future freshman night at the high school that night, so there's a lot of stuff going on at the high school as well.
Okay, we now entertain a motion to move to closed session.
I move the board adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19 dot 20, or dot 85, parentheses 1, parentheses C, parentheses E, and F, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body, governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically A, approval of executive session minutes, B, district administrator evaluation and contract, and C, discussion of potential action to issue a preliminary notice of, to consider the non-renewal of administrators' individual contract pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 118 dot 24.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Comments? Hearing none, a roll call vote on the motion, please.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers? Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye. Motion carries. We'll be moving into closed session.